The McCormick Woods Village Park renderings that we received this evening.
Okay. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second over here, Mr. Donlan. Any further discussion of adding a discussion of the McCormick Village Park? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You've added item F. I think there's one more amendment, isn't there?
Yes, but that's on the consent agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Do I do that now?
Um, why not?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I would move that consent agenda item C be moved to our January 26th meeting. And for council's information, that's regarding the resource officer we have with the South Kitsap School District, and the school district has asked for an extension.
Is that June 26th or January?
Well, January, it could even be July.
I heard, I heard January.
I heard January.
January's been a long time.
Whatever one starts with J and works is what we'll go with.
So is there a motion to move that to the July 26th meeting? There is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to move consent item, consent item C, which is the contract for the school resource officer, to the July 26th meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that item has been moved and removed from this agenda. Any other additions to the agenda or modifications to the agenda? Okay, Mr. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second? We have a motion and a second on the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. We are to citizens' comment portion of the hearing, meeting. Anyone wishing to comment on items on the agenda may, and if you're here to talk at the public hearing on item six, we'll call for that later in the meeting, so hold your comments if you could till that point. So yes, sir, for items on the agenda.
Yes, sir, my name is Patrick Lucas, I reside at 232 Goldenrod Street, Port Orchard. And business item 7A, that's one I would like we the people to talk about. And this is a good example of what we've been trying to get the city council and the mayor to understand about we the people. When you're elected, what we want you to do is ask us how we feel on things like, like business item 7A before you start voting these things in, because it's a lot, we spend a lot of money for these things. And like we had the last city council meeting, there was a problem with $35.2 million that was spent and wasn't enough to do the Tremont thing. Well, if you'd asked the people how they felt about it, maybe you wouldn't have to spend some of that money. Maybe you could have spent it in a more profitable, better manner for us. Okay? Any questions? Okay, thank you so much, Mayor.
Your comments. Anyone wish, yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Jerry Arnett, I reside at 288 Goldenrod, Port Orchard. I wish to comment on business item B, the adoption of a resolution. I would like to know when the city council is going to start abiding by the comprehensive plan and, and start representing the people of Port Orchard instead of special interest groups. If you wonder what I'm talking about, you can look it up in 1995, page 1 dash 3. It tells you clearly, and there's no gray matter on, on how you go about collecting money for capital facilities, and it's not a $20 car tab. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wish to comment on something on the agenda tonight?
Hello, my name is Scott Fitzsimmons, and we currently have a P plat approved about this, about the tax abatement program.
Okay, we're gonna hold, if it's for the tax abatement program, we're gonna hold a public hearing on that just a little bit later, and we'd like you to keep.
Oh, okay.
Hold your comments to that time. Thank you. Others wishing to comment? Yes, Mr. Whittleton?
One more time regarding the, the park. I wasn't intending on saying anything because it wasn't on the agenda, but now that it is, I'd like to see a road to the center of the park engineered rather than spending an extra quarter of a million dollars on upgrades and make those upgrades later as we can afford them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to comment on items on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment period of tonight's agenda. We have another one at the end of the meeting. We, we are on to the consent agenda. Anyone, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as published.
As amended.
As amended.
Since we adopted it as published, but okay, as amended.
Motion and multiple seconds? And so, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We have no presentations, and now we are to the public hearing. And we're holding a public hearing this evening on a proposed ordinance for a multifamily tax exemption. Mr. Bond?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. City staff and the city attorney have prepared a draft multifamily property tax exemption code in accordance with chapter 8414 RCW.
Mr. Bond? Could you just, a little closer to the microphone, we're having.
Sorry about that. The proposed code will provide time-limited exemptions from the value-based property taxes for multifamily housing projects of 10 or more units located in designated residential target areas to encourage development of affordable housing and redevelopment of underutilized or distressed areas. Under RCW 8414, certain Washington cities may establish a tax exemption program to stimulate the construction of new rehabilitated or converted multifamily housing within designated areas of the cities, including affordable housing. Port Orchard qualifies for this program per RCW 8414-0103, which allows cities to participate if they have a population of at least 5,000 and are located in the county that is required to plan under the Growth Management Act. The purpose of this program is to increase the residential availability and variety within the city, particularly for low and moderate income residents, and to attract new development into targeted areas for development and/or redevelopment. Development of low to moderate income multifamily housing is also consistent with the GMA's planning goals and the city's adopted 2036 population and housing targets. When a project is approved under the proposed city code, the value of eligible multifamily housing improvements would be exempted from property taxes for either eight or 12 years, depending on whether the multifamily project includes affordable housing. Per RCW 8414, the exemption does not apply to the value of the land, existing improvement or non-residential improvements. Only multifamily projects with 10 or more units would be eligible for the city's program, and only property owners who commit to renting or selling at, at least 20% of the units as affordable housing for low to moderate income households would be eligible for the 12-year exemption. If the property use changes in a manner inconsistent with the program requirements before the eight or 12-year exemption period ends, property taxes would be recovered by Kitsap County based on the difference between taxes paid and the taxes that would have been paid without the exemption. The recommendation is to open a public hearing and consider your next steps as, as council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. This time, I'm gonna open the public hearing, and I have a few people signed up, and then I'll ask for others from the audience. Mr. Whittleton, you're signed up first.
First of all, I, I kinda support this program. I still have concerns, and I brought them up quite a while ago about the, the possibility of barging in Chinese-made or foreign-made housing units and just stacking them up, calling them good. I, I really think that needs to be addressed and, and just pull the rug out from under it before it gets going. I would also like a commitment from the council that this is the only exemption to be given. All fees, charges that would apply to any other construction will not be waived or reduced, and all requirements for setbacks, parking, and amenities will also be required. I don't want to see a, a thing where we snowball this, because, you know, maybe this doesn't work like we want it to, so we throw a little more sugar on it, and it just doesn't sound good to me, and that's, those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Whittleton, you want to testify?
Good evening. I could go with this if it were, it was more stringent. Right now, I'm still concerned that we have no derelict building ordinance. I think we have to deal with blight from both ends of the situation, and I feel like we are potentially ignoring constraints that we can put into place as it is now. My other concern is establishing that local, local workforce needs to be involved in this, and also, as my husband mentioned, as in Bremerton, where they're bringing in the modulators from China, that local sourcing of materials and that sort of thing needs to be built into this, so it's, it's a better economic situation for everybody. My other concern is, I've been talking with people from Bremerton who have this in place, and I would like to see a tighter restriction, or tighter constraints on enforcement when it comes to the 20% housing issue, because it appears that potentially that can fall through the cracks, and so, like to know how that will be enforced and, and will it be strictly enforced? Because we have a lot of things right now that are on the books that are not enforced as far as dereliction is concerned, you know, the tall grass, the whole nine yards, things like that. So I really want to know that this, this is a tight deal before we start going in this direction. So that's my input on this, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Scott Fitzsimmons? Thank you for being patient.
First of all, we recently got a P plat approved, plat up on our overlook up here, which is over by the theaters, the far right-hand corner over the red mark. The tax abatement area is all around our, our property. Right now, we're looking at 28 lots that are P plat approved, and if something like this was to be adopted, which I think it would be very good for the downtown area, we would definitely consider moving it into apartments. We would not do the modular units, we would do, you know, very nice apartments. And, but we, you know, right now, we have 28 lots, it's, it's R20, so we could do it up to 120 to 130 units, but it's right in that one little notch. And I think it's probably the area, I don't know how many multifamily residential zoned properties are down here, but I think we're probably one of the closest ones. It's just a, just fall down the hill, you're at the, at the ferry, and the foot ferry. And I know that, I heard some rumors that there might be a foot ferry going directly from Seattle to Port Orchard. I don't know if that's true or not, but I've heard rumors about it. And I just think it would really vitalize the area. One thing about it, we would probably have a lot of infrastructure that would be, have to be done if we had to do that, and something like this tax abatement would be, you know, a good incentive for us to, to, to look at this. And we would definitely look at it if something like this passed. It's, it seems to me that you want some multifamily, and we have a property that would be easily, you know, put into that tax abatement area. I do have kind of an outline and letters about the property and everything else that if, I can hand them all to you guys?
Sure. Or you can hand them to the clerk, and she can get them to us. So just to clarify, your property is uphill and east of the old Kmart site that we've got?
Right above Tractor Supply and right next to the, the theaters, which is exactly, you know, right next to our, I mean, it bumps right into our property on, on two sides. And we go up the hill, and then we have, it's a beautiful piece of property. It's plateaued, it's got good views and everything, and we're, but we definitely would consider putting in a very nice apartment complex if something like this happened. Right now, it's 28 lots, and I would be, we would definitely consider doing something like that. I think it'd be good for the area. My good friend of mine, they did this in Tacoma, and he built apartments and, and other things there, and it's just been a boom on, on the hilltop area, and the place is just, is revitalized. We got UW coming in and, and the population, and I just think that this would be a natural fit.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Anyone wish, else wishing to testify? Mr. Grogan, thank you.
My name is Stuart Grogan, I'm the executive director of Housing Kitsap, we're the housing authority for Kitsap County. Our offices are at 345 Sixth Street in Bremerton, and I wanted to come here this evening to express our support for the property tax exemption that you're considering. I don't think, I have to tell you, that we're at near crisis levels in affordable housing in this county, all throughout the county. Over the last year and a half I've been working, the most common statement, the most common request I get, and the most common concern I get, is that we need more units, we need more assets, we need more places for people to live. As a manager of affordable housing and as a developer of affordable housing, I know how hard it is to put together one of these packages. My colleagues in the private sector have an equally difficult job of trying to figure out how to add affordable housing. Communities in Kitsap County need every tool in the toolbox to help address this pretty significant issue across, in this community as well as across the county. So I wanted to encourage you to move this forward to a public hearing, to final action and to adopt the opportunity for people to take advantage of this property tax exemption to create some affordable housing. The thing I would echo one of your previous speakers about compliance, affordable housing is a very difficult thing to manage, and it's a difficult thing to make sure that you're getting to the population that you serve. And one of the, there's, I know there's a section in here that talks about compliance, and it enables the city to go and check from time to time or at their discretion. And I would encourage you to ask the mayor and the staff to make sure that there is a, a plan to check on a regular basis, that if you, once you give the exemption, that you're getting the population, and then what that does is help set up a system where you can check and make sure that it's getting you what you really need, what you really want. But again, I'd like to encourage you to support this and move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Gearing?
Hello, my name is Rick Gearing, and I'm representing my mom regarding, she owns 17 acres behind the Town Square Mall. She's owned that for probably 40 years, and out of those 40 years, we've lost a little bit of land to different parts of the wetland issue. So right now, we have spent some money to get it planned out for 136 units. Our goal is to sell that 136-unit development, and it lends itself to more of a garden apartment style of multiple family. So what this would do, it would help us allow somebody to take a look at this development and be able to pencil it out better, to say, hey, Port Orchard's a less expensive location to build and then produce 136 units. So my mom and I support any type of tax exemption regarding multifamily for a potential developer-owner. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to comment? Yes, Jerry.
I guess I'm on the other side of the fence. I just question, with all of the taxes and the fees that have been added on to the average citizen, here we are giving people that have probably a much higher income more ways to make more money. There was a comment made after, outside, you know, one evening, that they're only making a 20% increase now on their money, whereas they could make, like in Gig Harbor, a 3% or 400% increase on their money. But there's nothing there for those of us at the bottom. And it's all kind of pie in the sky. Oh, we'll have more people, so they'll contribute more to the economy. It amazes me that these are concepts that have been brought in probably by developers, and it's, it just keeps being passed down to all the different levels. But I truly don't see that our country has seen a lot of, the finances coming back, it's a continual coming back to the people for more and more and more, even though these have been in places in a lot of different communities. But these taxes just keep coming and coming and coming. So having all of these people have the ability to build these things sure hasn't helped the local economy in a lot of places, because we're all getting more and more piled high, because along with this comes a lot of added expenses to our communities. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I think you only get one bite at the apple.
Actually, I have a question for him. I have a question for him.
Okay, well, close the public hearing first, and then, I think then it would be appropriate to ask questions.
Or do we do that during the discussion?
Do we do that on the business agenda now?
Okay, or we could do it at the, yeah.
Whenever.
During the discussion, okay.
I have a question for you.
Okay, fair enough. Others wishing to testify? Mr. Gearing, there's a public comment period at the very end of the meeting that you're more than welcome, you've got three minutes there at the end, so. Others wishing to comment this evening? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And as we added, we have a discussion item of this matter at item 7E. So we are on to our business items, and the first is item 7A, an adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Transpo Group for the old Clifton Corridor Study and Anderson Hill Roundabout Design. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, your honor, council members. As approved within the 2016 budget, the city's Public Works Department is now moving forward with the Anderson Hill Road Southwest, Southwest Old Clifton Road Roundabout 60% Design. This project is a requirement of the McCormick Urban Village Development Agreement for Transportation and is funded in part by the McCormick Woods Transportation Impact Fees and the Bayside Platte Transportation Mitigation Fees. Therefore, on July 1st, 2016, the City of Port Orchard Public Works Department selected three qualified firms from the city's current professional services roster as attached to the Resolution 05916 for the main category, design and planning, engineering services and subcategory, bikeway planning and design, civil engineering, pedestrian path facilities, planning and design, roundabouts, planning and design, transportation planning and design, and transportation traffic. Staff then scored each statement of qualification and selected the Transpo Group as being the most qualified professional services engineering firm for the project. On July 6th, 2016, the city received a fee proposal from the Transpo Group in the amount of $1,000, $155,000 for the 2016 Roundabout 60% Design. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution thereby approving a contract with Transpo Group in an amount not to exceed $155,000 for the 2016 Anderson Hill Southwest, Southwest Old Clifton Road Roundabout 60% Design and documenting the professional services procurement procedures pursuant to RCW 3980. And I would like to note that we did budget only $150,000 for this project, so there will be a $5,000 additional add to get this project done.
Budget amendment later in the year.
Or manage within the overall budget.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Lucarelli?
I move to adopt a resolution thereby approving a contract with the Transpo Group, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $155,000 for the 2016 Anderson Hill Road Southwest, whoops, 2016 Anderson Hill Road Southwest, Southwest Old Clifton Road Roundabout 60% Design and documenting the professional services procurement procedures pursuant to RCW 39.80.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second by Mr. Kachari. Discussion of this item. Councilmember Deener?
I just have a question as to why scope of work elements eight and nine are not included in, in the contract at this time?
I think, I have to go back and refresh my memory.
Those would have taken.
They were, they were beyond the 60%.
Right.
Right. So they're, so we only budgeted for 60% this year, and we'll finish the rest next year.
All right, it's a, it's what was budgeted for it, okay.
Right, we're somewhat constrained to what we thought it might cost. Again, this is a required project that's being funded out of impact fees collected, so we'll look at finishing the project next year and continuing to use those impact fees that have already been collected.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none. Be voting on a resolution approving a contract with Transpo Group for the old Clifton Corridor Study Anderson Hill Roundabout Design. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to item 7B, adoptive, adoption of a resolution or ordinance for the imposition of vehicle license fees by seeking voter approval or by council action. Ms. Cates, is that you? According to the agenda?
I can certainly do that, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, please.
Go ahead. The city conducted a public hearing on June 28th, 2016, to hear public comment on the proposed implementation of a transportation benefit district vehicle license fee. The city council heard testimony on the amount of a vehicle license fee, a desire by some that the city first seek voter approval before implementing such a fee, and questions on how vehicle license fee funds would be spent. The city acknowledges the comments heard during the public hearing and has asked city staff to prepare two options for the city council, for city council action. An ordinance that proves, that provides city council implementation of a $20 vehicle license fee, or a resolution that provides replacing an advisory vote on the November 8th, 2016 ballot, to ask city residents whether the city should impose an annual $20 per vehicle license fee. The proposed $20 vehicle license fee will be used for maintenance and improvements to city streets, as identified in the city's comprehensive plans, and is budgeted within the city's biennial budget. Pursuant to RCW 8280140, a new vehicle license fee may not be collected until six months after approval by the city council. It should be noted that the city council may choose to pass the proposed ordinance, and no later than July 26th, 2016, pass a resolution for a ballot measure seeking advisory vote on whether the city should maintain or repeal the ordinance passed by the city council implementing the $20 vehicle license fee. In doing so, the city council would effectively start the six-month clock on the, on the collection of vehicle license fees and still have time to potentially repeal the ordinance if the six months have elapsed. The recommendation of the staff is to move forward with the implementation of a $20 vehicle license fee, either by city council action or by seeking voter approval. And you'll see that a revised version of both the ordinance and resolution have been provided to you, and we would like to provide some explanation as to why, why you're looking at this red line. So I'll hand it over to Alan.
Thank you very much. The, there is a red line version, and I just want to mention that the city council originally passed the TBD ordinance on December 8th, 2015, and then back on June 14th, the treasurer brought forward to you an ordinance that aligned the city council and the TBD as one body. That was unnecessary and in error. The original ordinance that was passed on December 8th did provide that the city council did, was in fact, the TBD as well. That was my misunderstanding, my mistake, and it was recognized. That ordinance was not published, that was ordinance 1016, was not held for publication, it will be repealed. So that was an unnecessary action that really didn't provide for anything, and that's my error, and I want to apologize to the council and any citizens that I may have confused. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt an ordinance establishing an annual vehicle license fee. Second?
Okay. Has, since.
$20.
The $20. The motion maker never quite finished his sentence there before we got a second, so.
That's what, that's how it's written.
Yeah, written, is, is the $20 fee, okay.
Yep.
All right. We have a motion and a second to impose a $20 vehicle license fee. Discussion of this item?
Well, I guess I get to kick that off.
You do.
So I'd like to impose a couple amendments to the appropriate ordinance. One is for sake of clarity, and it is the second recital beginning with whereas, it is the third line down. And I understand, first of all, that sidewalks are a related infrastructure to streets, but for clarity, I'd like it to read, preservation and maintenance of the city's streets and sidewalks and related infrastructure. That's my first proposed amendment.
Okay, so that's, help me here again, it was the third paragraph?
It's the shorter of the two redlined ordinances that would establish the fee outright. It's the second paragraph, whereas, third line down on that paragraph, beginning with preservation.
Streets and sidewalks, still not streets, sidewalks.
So I'll, I'll read, whereas the city council of the City of Port Orchard, the city council, found it to be in the best interests of the city to establish a citywide transportation benefit district for the preservation and maintenance of the city's streets and sidewalks.
And sidewalks.
Sidewalks. And related infrastructure, consistent, et cetera. I think that clarity helps us understand that we can use this for the upcoming and very expensive ADA retrofit project that we're going to be faced with, for which we have no idea just how huge that bill is going to be. So I think that's just for clarity.
Okay.
I have another amendment.
So I think we should vote on these individually.
I agree.
So we have an amendment, a motion on the table to add sidewalks, and I've found it there, streets, comma, sidewalks, and related infrastructure. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, further discussion of this amendment.
We had discussed that, that makes sense.
Yeah.
All right. Having, hearing no other discussion, all in favor of this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, then amendment carries. You have another proposed amendment?
I do, and this one's, I think, much more simpler. Somewhere in here, another recital that would read, whereas, the annual vehicle license fee will help ensure the city is competitive with grant funding opportunities.
And just adding, maybe that is number...
A whereas.
A whereas.
Another whereas.
Yeah, and we had talked about how we need this in our bucket to ensure that we are competitive for our grant funding opportunities.
Okay.
And that's what that would hopefully provide.
Did you capture that, Clerk Reinsen? Could you read that one more time?
Can you read it one more time? Whereas, the annual vehicle license fee will help ensure the city is competitive with grant funding opportunities, semicolon, and...
So it's an additional whereas. Okay, I have an amendment on the table. Is there a second to that amendment?
I would second that.
Councilmember Ashby seconds that amendment. Discussion of that amendment? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, or amendment carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that...
Yep.
Okay, other comments? Discussion? Councilmember Ashby?
Well, we have new people in the audience, so I would like to just repeat some of the things I said at our last meeting after the public hearing, and it alludes to what Councilman Deener just said. Transportation dollars are very, very competitive, and in order for Port Orchard to score well on grant applications, it's important that the city has implemented the tools that are available to us. We have already implemented traffic impact fees, we now have a concurrency ordinance, and we created our transportation benefit district. What we had not completed yet was implementing a license fee. We had not funded the transportation benefit district. We, I do believe, because one of the other options for us was to put this to a vote, my personal position on that is I would not want to put anything to a vote until we have the report from our pavement management system, and that report, I believe, is to be ready by the end of the year. And that will let us know exactly what our maintenance and preservation needs are, a rough dollar amount, and allow us to prioritize them. I would not want to ask for a $40 license fee or a $50 license fee if that was too much or not enough money. The $20 license fee, I believe, is critical in order for us to be successful with grant applications for our Tremont project. The, this council has on numerous occasions made Tremont the number-one project, number-one priority for our city. On February 9th, we passed a resolution to support the Tremont widening process with the intent to finance the project through the acceptance of grants and issuance of general obligation bonds. With the issuance of general obligation bonds, we have to debt service those funds. We have to make payments. And so anticipating that that debt service will be in the range of $500,000 to $600,000 a year, we have to have money to continue our paving and maintenance programs. So to me, we want to keep the streets up as best we can, we want to complete the Tremont project, and I think the $20 fee at this point is critical because we have grant applications due in August, and so I believe we have to have it there. The other issue with that is if we choose not to complete Tremont, we have monies that we will have to repay, and the repayment of those will also be done with general obligation bonds, and we will still have money to debt service. So I believe it is reasonable and responsible as a council member to implement a $20 license fee at this time.
Okay. Other comments? Mr. Lucarelli?
Something that I would like to also comment on is about putting it to a vote. This is something we opened up and had the public comment on this, and most of what we heard was that the citizens that were concerned at all about this wanted an accountability of some sort, a system in which we could show what was being done with the funds. Personally, that's something I think that is lacking in a lot of government decisions, and I totally agree with that. And we have been, we have been, the treasurer has confirmed that we, there is a system in place where we can totally track this, and we can let the citizens know what is being done with the fees that we collect. Now, we won't even be able to actually put this into place for a period of time, but there is a tracking system, and we will be accountable for letting everyone know what is being done with the funds. I think that, that, having listened to everyone and personally being very fiscally conservative, I see the need for this fee, and probably we should have done it a while ago. We need to move forward with these projects, and we will be paying back otherwise the 3.2 million and have nothing to show for it. So Tremont needs to move forward. This will make a dent, and I would support this.
Other comments? Mr. Cuchardi?
I agree with all of the last comments. I think the ability for us to show to our grant sources that we have this tool in place is absolutely paramount, and I think the whole idea of publishing a plan and showing our residents exactly where these funds are going is absolutely paramount. But I'd like to add one more thing to that, and this really gets into council responsibilities as it relates to our budgets and the annual plan, is, you know, currently and over the years, we've already allocated dollars to road funds. We have monies there. And so what I do not want us to see happen, for example, if this $20 car tab were to generate $200,000, and in this fiscal year, we are already putting $200,000 worth of funds in from, say, the general fund, that next year, we don't remove the $200,000 we were previously allocating because we have a new pot of $200,000, and there's no net benefit to our residents. So I want to make sure that we're utilizing these new sources of funds to grow and create net benefit for our people. And I think as we go into planning and budgeting, I know I'll be absolutely trying to keep all of us accountable for that, that these new funds will be in addition to the commitments that we historically try to make. Now, granted, things happen, recessions happen, things have to move around, but I think is the intentions is these are new funds to do a greater benefit to our roads, not just to break even and reallocate those somewhere else.
Yes, Mr. Chan?
The only thing I would add, and it's probably just paraphrasing what others have said, but it's saying it in a way that I understand, is that I personally felt that we should have a vote advisory because it would compel us to provide more information to the voters who, I believe, do not have the background or understand the projects. However, I do accept the explanation from Councilmember Ashby that we may not know the amount that we should be asking for if we were to put it to an advisory vote. I believe an advisory vote, for example, in the general election would cost in the neighborhood of $12,000. These are the figures that I've heard from an administration. That is $12,000, which some people think is a lot, but compared to the $200,000, I think it would, I don't think it's out of bounds. So summarizing from that, I am accepting that we would consider perhaps a vote when we consider how much more that we need. I would also just like to add as a comment, there are no exemptions for income level for this fee. Someone asked me that. And this is a tool that we're given to raise funds. For example, we cannot base this fee on the value of the car, which some might feel is more equitable. Instead, we just have this tool of $20, if you have a car registered in the city, you pay it. I would like to say that since most vehicles registered in the city belong to residents, I would like to see that the bulk of the $200,000 is going to residential paving and sidewalks as opposed to the other transportation needs. So I will actually support this resolution.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Mr. John.
I'm going to repeat some things I said a few meetings ago, too. I agree with the statements that my fellow councilmembers have said. About 15 years ago, Tim Iman passed Initiative 695, and it dropped our tabs, our vehicle tab fees dramatically. What it also revealed was there was a lot of pork barrel add-ons that little or nothing to do with transportation. This $20 fee is none of that. This is a straight fee that will take $20 and put it in our streets. It will, it will make improvements. If there's no funny business, there's nothing. It is dedicated to those tasks, those projects. We're taking responsible steps. We have our inventory that being made by the magic bus. Our streets will tell us the depth of pavement, the conditions of the sidewalks, all kinds of things. It'll give us an inventory of our roads, and it'll also give us a priority list of which ones are failing first. And we can take that fee, and then we can give our citizens a list of prioritized projects to spend it on. I think it's a responsible thing to do for us. We were all elected to make hard decisions, and this is a hard decision to make. It's 20 bucks. It's another fee, but it's a good one. We want our streets fixed, and I think this is a responsible fee.
Clancy, just one thing. There is a small administration fee connected with collecting this, so you said $20 would go. So I'm just saying, there's a little...
State gets a portion of it.
Just a little bit of admin fee in there. Just saying.
Other comments?
I just wanted to state the obvious, that this is not a panacea for road maintenance. $200,000 does not go very far in the roads' maintenance business, so, but anything will help.
I think the grindouts of paving we'd done Bethel this year was 700? Is that 700 last year, and what do we spend this year?
Well, last year, we did, we did some overlay with that, and we're actually under-budget with what we did this year, but yeah, to some degree, you're, you know, $500,000 to $600,000 is basically doing a grindout. You start looking at some of these larger improvement projects that require curb and gutter and storm drainage. Yeah, it doesn't go very far, but we've got to start.
Mr. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I 110% concur with pretty much everything that was said here at the table. We have a desperate need to be able to do more for our roads just on a regular basis, and I have on an annual basis, as the mayor can attest to during budget development, I'm always reminding, please, the Finance Committee, of our failing streets and the need to do more. And I agree, this is not the silver bullet. This isn't the panacea. This is not going to fix all of our roads, but it's going to go a long way towards maintaining our roads as well as dealing with the infrastructure improvements that we're faced with now in our streets. And all I can say is I'm 110% for it. The only part I'm against is I think it needs to go to a vote, so I'm going to be voting against it.
All right. Any other comments? Hearing none. We will be voting on adoption of an ordinance establishing an annual vehicle license fee of $20 with two amendments, one adding sidewalks and an additional whereas that came from Mr. Deener. All in favor of that ordinance as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Ordinance carries six to one. We are on to the 7C, approval of the June 21st, 2016 council work-study minutes.
I will move to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Mr. Clausen, appears you were absent. Are you going to vote, or are you abstaining?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. So all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention.
Yes.
We are on to the approval of the June 28th council meeting minutes.
I move to approve the council, June 28th council meeting minutes.
Okay, and I see that Mr. Cuchardi was absent that evening, so you're going to abstain this evening? So all in favor of approval of those minutes?
Do you have a second, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Clausen, thank you for your second. Okay, we have a motion and a second now. Any discussion, maybe? Rushing things along. All in favor of approval of the June 28th council meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention. We are on to 7E, discussion of our earlier public hearing of the proposed ordinance for a multifamily taxes exemption. And, Ms. Ashby, you added that discussion item?
I...
That's probably a good practice that we've been missing.
Yeah.
We have a, a public hearing, maybe we should have a discussion item at the, in the same meeting. So thank you for catching that.
Yeah, it just seemed like an appropriate time so that we could give staff direction as we move forward. And as the originator of the business item, do I get to talk first?
Absolutely.
Okay. I don't have a lot to say. I have one question for Nick, and that is the, the tax exemption on the increased real estate value, that's just the City of Port Orchard's portion, correct? They will still pay the schools and the county and the fire districts and everybody else on full value. It's the only one we have any effect on is the city's portion.
Correct. That's my understanding, unless the attorney or the finance director has a different understanding.
I don't have a different understanding.
Thank you. The, one of the comments we heard this evening, and I'm, I'm not sure which one it was, I just want to say that the City of Port Orchard, this is not a, was not our idea. This is something that has been vetted through the state legislature and has an RCW behind it. This is a practice that is used elsewhere. One of the comments indicated, just the way I heard it, I thought, maybe you thought that this was our idea. I wish, but no, it has, it has completely been through the system, and again, it's a tool that will allow us to encourage some redevelopment of some of our areas that are underdeveloped at the current time. I also heard a comment regarding making sure that the, that the mix stayed there, that we were in compliance. And I believe what the ordinance says is basically that anyone with the exemption has to provide us annually a report, and we have the right to go down and physically make sure that they are in compliance with the needs. And also, we want to clarify, they do not have to include affordable or load a moderate income housing for the exemption. If they do not, and it's just multifamily, the exemption is eight years. It's not the full 12 years. So you do not have to think, as I think some, some people may, that this is going to be all low-income housing. One of the things I like about it is the fact that you can commingle low and moderate income with regular homes and truly diversify a neighborhood. I see that as a benefit. I personally live in a very diverse neighborhood, and I like the opportunity to be able to provide that in more areas of our city. I'm supportive of it. I see some particular neighborhoods that have stood dormant for several years, and any incentive that we... any incentive that we could provide, I believe, is warranted.
Thank you for your comment. Other comments? Mr. Clausen?
I concur, and I especially like the area that has been designated. My initial thought, when I thought about this, I thought, you know, we're just going to get a lot more apartments in our city. But then, when I sat and really looked at the areas that we're designating, it makes a lot of sense. It's a redevelopment of an area that desperately needs it. The other thing, I guess you could say somewhat self-serving, all of this area is on a transit route, so that it provides easy access for mobility for people that take advantage of the low and moderate income housing. So to me, I see a lot more pluses than I see minuses, and I got to say, I see a few minuses.
Mr. Deener?
Actually, Fred was ahead of me.
Fred, can I stand up first?
Okay. As Nick was reading this, the question did come in my mind, and that I can understand that people think that the developers are paying absolutely no property taxes. And I'm not talking about you, but I could see people saying, oh, they're exempt from property tax, and that's the shorthand way of explaining it. But what they're really exempt from is the improvement, the buildings that they would be building. Everything else, including the land that they're on, they would be still paying property tax. So I'm actually quite comfortable with this.
Yeah, their investment is what they invest is what we're waving at them.
For a limited time.
Mr. Deener?
So I pulled up the RCW, and I would encourage those who are interested in this program to look at 84.14.005. And those are the three findings that the legislature made when establishing this program. And I won't read it, but it's, I think, well-articulated. And then I wanted to follow up with a question, I think maybe for Nick. We heard testimony earlier today where somebody would like to join into the mapped area. What is the process for that?
Well, the council can legislatively amend the map at any time in the future, and so you can, you know, this is something that can change easily. It's not a development regulation, the way that a zoning map has to go to the Planning Commission, and then to Department of Commerce, and so on. So it's fairly easy to amend, and if you would like this to move forward to a future meeting, and you want to change the map, we can make that change between now and the next meeting. With regard to that specific property, you know, we're really targeting redevelopment areas, as opposed to raw land that has not yet been developed. And so, you know, I think that's really a policy discussion for you all to have on whether there are areas that are undeveloped in the city that are more difficult to develop than other areas, or that need this extra help to make a project viable. And I'll leave that up to you.
So with that, you know, I'd like the opportunity to talk about that, but I think we should, maybe at some point, I don't know if it's the Land Use Committee, but talk about what the bookends for that process to amend this map would look like. I don't think it should be as easy as asking and getting. I think that there should be more of a look into what is being asked of.
I agree.
Mr. Cucciardi?
I was just going to add on to what Councilmember Chang was saying, you know, in addition, there could be a development that includes mixed use, and all of the commercial, you know, properties there are not part of this equation either, and those improvements would be taxed at the assessed value rate, so it's just the residential component of the development. So there could be potential for mixed use, and it could even be more of a win-win, if you look at it from a financial standpoint back to the city.
Other comments? Is there a direction? Would you like this brought back in two weeks, or are we ready for that? Or are we wanting it to go to a committee? Or, I think it's been to a couple of committees already.
I'm ready for it to come back in two weeks.
You're ready for it to come back in two weeks?
And talk about the policy for making a change to the map, as directed?
Yeah, we do have a Land Use Committee meeting on the 20th. Maybe we could add that to the agenda.
Adopting a policy to modify the map?
Yeah.
If you have, I mean, it's pretty short there, between the committee meeting and the council action. If you have some thoughts, maybe you want to share those with Nick and I, you know, ahead of that meeting? Could be helpful. Otherwise, Nick's kind of stabbing in the dark, and coming to a committee meeting and has not a whole lot of time to turn something around.
Well, I think the policy is really to...
The map.
...deal with moving forward, not necessarily what we presented here, so...
Okay.
We have to start here.
Yeah.
And we might look at what other jurisdictions do to amend their areas as well.
Right, and this particular one has not been adopted yet.
Right.
So the policy would come in play after our meeting on the 26th, if this is brought back on the 26th. If we wanted to adjust the map now, I believe perhaps that would, you would want to talk to Land Use, or get more information on the property in question.
I was also going to mention that you can always amend the ordinance. If we want to have a process for amending the map, you can always amend the ordinance at a later date, so that doesn't have to be done for this to get implemented in two weeks. But we can certainly look at it at Land Use, and then if it's something minor that we can insert, we can bring it forward as a land use recommendation that's sort of an amendment to what you see now. But yeah, if you have any thoughts right now on whether properties are included or are not included, I'm happy to hear that. But I think the Land Use Committee could discuss that.
Sure. And, you know, I had the RCW up, but 8414040 speaks to the designations of these targeted areas, and the criteria for that local designation, so maybe that's something to start with.
Mr. Clausen, you have another comment?
Yeah, what I was going to suggest is, maybe at the Land Use Committee, if you could look specifically at this piece of property that we've had requested and have a recommendation, we could make that change if appropriate when we deal with it in two weeks.
Fair enough. Okay, bringing it back in two weeks. I think we're on to our next discussion item, which is a discussion of the McCormick Village Park, and we've got a pretty map here at the dais. Mr. Bond, or do you have...
Yeah, thank you. The two maps that are in front of you, I emailed out yesterday when I received them. We've met with our landscape architects a handful of times, and we've refined kind of the low-level design, and they're ready to take this thing forward into developing more construction-level drawings. And so this is just an opportunity to check in with the city council to make sure that we're on the right track, that you don't see anything that is inconsistent with what we've talked about previously. The two drawings really focus in on the commons area at the entrance to the park. That's the color rendering, and then there's a larger rendering that zooms out and shows the other trail improvements, the two bridges, as well as the proposed off-leash dog park areas. And so far, I think that we haven't had any surprises. We did play around with a couple of alternatives on the additional parking. When we talked, I think it may work study, we talked about adding an additional task, which would be to provide temporary parking, and what we determined was that the cost of building temporary parking on the adjacent area where the future fire station is going to go is actually going to be more than just adding it to the existing drive aisle, and you're not providing significantly more spaces. So we can actually provide more permanent parking now at a lower cost than providing temporary parking that will eventually get disrupted when they build a fire station. And this layout actually can accommodate the future fire station as well. So I think it's a better design. You'll also see the other alternatives. We talked about the off-leash dog park and the spray play area, and the two picnic shelters, and then there's play areas for children of different age groups. There's the tot lot, and then the slightly older kids' play area, I think that goes up to 12 or 13 years old. And, yeah, happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I have two, well, one question and one request. It might be worthwhile for the audience to talk about some of the previous talking points about why we couldn't phase this out. For example, I think it was mentioned early on that, wouldn't it be nice if we could look at doing this in phases? For example, taking out the dog parks for now, or some of these other features. And when we talked about that, I think there were some engineering difficulties associated with that. My thought was have a path wide enough for small equipment to move in, and that didn't work. But I was hoping that there could be an explanation given once again for the audience.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks for reminding me of that comment. The existing crushed stone path on the top of the page, that's the east side of the park, that's already wide enough for light vehicles. I think you can get an ambulance or light pickup trucks back there for maintenance. What we had discussed was that, you know, if we're going to do a spray play area now, getting in an excavator and, you know, concrete and other materials on that smaller access road after we build an entry plaza and put in landscaping is going to be difficult. This design does not preclude you from getting equipment back there, it's just getting the really big equipment back there. At this time, we're putting in both of the bridges. We are installing the dog parks in the previously cleared areas of the park. But beyond that, the park on this side of the creek is going to remain in a natural state. There's no further improvements proposed. The other improvements that have been identified are on the other side of the creek and will be accessed off of campus parkway. So if you were to, if you chose not to do the spray play area now, it would be much more difficult to do in the future. But I guess the other thing I didn't mention is that we applied for a grant to do almost all of these components, and so we signed a contract with a grant agency, and in order to get that money, we have to deliver the project as we applied. And so we are building this in one chunk based on that grant application, and we've only added two small items, one of which, we went from a water feature to a spray play area, which is slightly different than what we initially applied for, but was within the scope of our grant application.
And I guess I'd like to expand on that. So this project, this east side of Anderson Creek is actually being, has been developed in three phases. If you remember, the first phase was the logging phase. That was a separate phase in itself. Then the second phase really was what you have out there now, which was the clearing and grabbing, putting in the restroom, putting in some parking. So that was a second phase. And now this third phase is to comply with the grant. So that's one aspect. This isn't a single-phase project, we've actually been doing it very strategically. And it's very important that these improvements get built to comply with the grant. There's another important element, other than the accessibility issue with getting equipment into the backside, it's just a magnitude of efficiency. You know, costs don't go down over time. So if you waited 10 years to do the park, you have two main, you've got material costs and labor costs that will increase over that time period. You're also going to have the lot, the efficiency of mobilization. You know, mobilization is a 10% surcharge on a project for bringing in equipment, bringing in materials. And when you have the overall project, that mobilization covers that whole piece. If you take out a small element, and you have to mob in equipment for that smaller piece, that element becomes, you know, much more expensive than just doing it with the larger.
One thing to remember here, too, is we, you know, this is primarily grant-funded, with the difference being funded from our park impact fees. A majority of those park impact fees are being generated in this particular area. And it's not to say we're ignoring, you know, this is a million-dollar investment. Well, we're putting $3.5 million into the pathway downtown, so I think we're doing a lot for open space and recreational opportunities in our community, and I think we should be doing both of these things in a first-class manner.
So then I have a question as well. So Nick, you had been talking with Bremerton about a potential development in the area, and the developer potentially contributing to the cost of development of the park as perhaps mitigation for their own recreational requirements?
There's been no movement on that. I know that they've been talking to our transportation engineer about updating their traffic studies, but they have not approached me again about anything to do with the park. So if I hear anything on that, I'll certainly let you know.
Okay. That's unfortunate, because we know they'll be using it.
Mr. Cucciardi?
I appreciated some of the explanations just now, because I know some of the discussions we've had about this whole phasing seemed like it was going back to just the simple fact of, we can't get heavy equipment in, you know, after the fact. And what I think what I heard is, is that's really not the case. That's not the main reason for this, because we know in time that the concrete in the spray area is going to fail, the others fail, we're going to have to get equipment in there at some point. So I'm hopeful that, you know, the basic design of this is intending to have, in the future, that we're going to probably have to get something in there, but it's the issues of, you know, adhering to the terms of the grant, and the lay-down site, like you're saying, and the preparation, and the future costs, and, but I do hope that we're able to get equipment in over time, because at some point, we will need to bring equipment in there and make repairs, or, you know, what happens. So I hope that's a part of this.
Other comments? Mr. Chang?
I think it's a beautiful design, and I think it's a very exciting park. My only concern is, and we may not be able to answer, is it a neighborhood park, or is it a regional park? I think with the additional parking, it becomes more of a regional park, which is good, because it's huge. And my other concern is, I just hope that we aren't concentrating all of our park funds into this one project and neglecting the rest of the park citywide.
Sashby, do you have a comment?
Well, I just, for our discussion this evening, I thought the question was, is the architect on the right path? And I would say yes. I like the design. I was on the committee, as was Fred, I believe, 10 years ago, or whenever it was, for the design, and this is following that very closely. What's the unknown is, is the cost to implement these things. And we had looked at some numbers before, and it looks to me like you've scaled it back, that you value-engineered this. And so I would be, personally, I think you're on the right track, and would have them continue to move forward. I don't know if we need to go to a work-study, or what Nick needs at this point.
Mr. Clausen?
I would concur with Beck. I thought we were just talking about the concept in here, and I think it's a great layout. It really works well. My only additional thought would be more of the, I think, what is the gravel pathway that goes along the west side of the parking? If that could possibly be extended all the way out to the road? Just so it gives a pedestrian connection to the roadway. Eventually, I think there's going to be other ways to get to this particular park for some of those housing areas, whether it be a path alongside Clifton or some other. My only...
And we have a pathway on Old Clifton Road programmed in our tip, so that's a future transportation project, and it makes sense to connect it.
Great. I think it would be great if we could extend it out there.
I had a quick question for the mayor, which is, does the city have a policy about seeking sponsorships, or even yielding naming rights? Maybe that's a way to get some funding? I mean, do we have a policy?
We don't have a policy.
Okay. Is that good or bad? I mean, can it be done, do you think?
Well, we've seen it done at the high school stadium. I've...
I don't see why not.
You know...
Okay. Yeah, maybe we don't need a policy, but maybe we'd like to encourage the mayor to get sponsorships to fund the rest of the park.
I'll get on that. By next week, I'll handle it.
I guess, Mayor, I think I'd like to point out, in the last eight years, you know, we have $3.5 million on the pathway for the, just finishing the construction, but that's really a $7 million overall project with all the phases the right away. So that's an investment in the downtown. We improved Clayton Park, we improved Active Club, and we have the DeKalb Pier. So the city has been very proactive over this time period, including the different phases of this park, in improving parks and open spaces and activity areas within the city.
Carolyn would be proud.
Yes.
Mr. Deener?
I'd like to see that the council be the first to use the spray park.
Okay.
In August, of whatever year.
Okay, do you have the direction you need, Mr. Bond?
On the right track, so I will let the landscape architect know.
All right. We are on to the mayor's report. So...
Councilmember.
I guess, I wrote over the top of that. Dang. Well, we added so many agenda items that scribbled, so, no, that's okay. We have the Finance Committee. Mr. Clausen?
Nothing other than we need to schedule a date, so since we're all here this evening, maybe in the meeting, we could find a time.
Okay, so we have an executive session, so at some point, maybe you guys can get together after that or before that. So we have economic development, tourism.
And we will be meeting next Monday at 2:00 here.
Utilities?
Utilities, we are going to be canceling our July meeting...
Utilities. We are going to be canceling our July meeting and our next meeting will be August 15th.
Okay. Is sewer advisory met?
We haven't met yet, but July 20th at 6:30 is our next meeting.
Okay. Land use?
We haven't met since the last update. We're meeting on July 20th. So far, the agenda items are drones, administrative conditioning use permit program, multi-family tax incentives, discussion, as well as implementation of the comp plan.
Okay. Lodging tax. I think we're getting close there.
Yeah, I think we're getting close to committee. It'll probably have six. I'd like to take a moment to share something that I asked Brandy to print out, if you can put it on the overhead. You guys have probably heard about this Pokemon Go. Probably heard a lot about it. These are screenshots of how Port Orchard looks on a smartphone. This is looking down, oh, I forgot what it is. It's either looking down Bay Street, not Bay Street, either Sydney. Essentially, it has what they call an augmented reality. Oh, okay. Yeah. This is another view of looking at the city. Did I give you three or two? Okay. And this is what they call augmented reality, where you have these little creatures that you're trying to capture, along with, using the camera of your, of the city. This, for example, is looking down Klein. And this has turned out to be a really nice surprise. That's brought a lot of people to be walking around Bay Street, as you've seen, looking at their phones. They're apparently doing it in the evening because there's more synergy. If you have more people out, you get more of these, they don't call them creatures. They call them something else. I'm probably beyond the, the intended age range of this app, but it's still very enjoyable. And I would encourage everyone, if you have a smartphone, to download it and, and check it out.
Okay. And you want an LTAC allocation for this? Is that what?
All funded.
Well, we wanted what they call a poke stop in every single store, yes.
All right. And we will have
Gives you a hint for where to go with the park for a sponsor.
Okay. Festival chimes and lights.
Pokemon Park.
We have a meeting next Monday at 3:30. But this meeting will be very specific to dealing with the tree for the festival and for reviewing where we're at with the garlands and the wreaths.
Okay. And just a reminder, next week's work study, we will have a lengthy agenda because we're taking August off. So we're packing a number of things into that meeting. So just don't get cranky as the night gets long. All right. Can we get to the mayor's report?
One more.
Thank you.
What, what?
If you again?
You did. So the Development Regulations Ad hoc Committee is meeting July 19th at 3:00 here at City Hall.
Okay. We should probably add that to the, the list. Then I won't, then I won't miss it.
And may I just say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a young man in our audience, Alex Brown, who is here working on a citizenship badge. And we'd like to just say hello and thank you for sitting out this meeting. He came to our Rotary meeting today and very promising young man. We just say hello.
All right. We are on to the mayor's report. So I attended the West Sound Local Integration Organization last week. It's a meeting that Beck's been attending that we've been discussing that maybe I'll take that over after the next meeting. It is our local group under the Puget Sound Partnership. They're developing a work plan for ecosystem restoration. Other mayors there, we have the tribe there, ecology and other members. This action plan they're working on, though, one of the things that I had a concern with is that there, one of the, the items on it was for all of the sewer plants to develop water reuse systems. And we're one of the only cities in the area that has such a system. And it's problematic. And I spoke to our challenges as far as no one wanting the expensive water that we're producing, the cost of the infrastructure. And so I was just, it's a little, it was an interesting meeting that they, some of the folks there really, I didn't feel, had any sense of reality of what things cost. And I spoke to, that if we had, you know, if we had to spend three or four million dollars upgrading, you know, revamping our water reuse system, or three or four million dollars on stormwater infrastructure in our aging, you know, in our older part of town, I believe that would have much more impact on the Puget Sound and the environment than, you know, what we're doing at the sewer plant. But, so it was an interesting meeting and I'm glad I got to attend. If you didn't notice, I should have mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, the propeller disappeared from inside the market. And there's a nice chest set in there. The operators of the market didn't want the propeller anymore. I facilitated the move with our public works department and the port accepted it. It's over here by the boat launch. If you're, if you're wanting to see it and take your picture in front of it, it's still in our downtown. It's just not inside the market anymore. So it's on our waterfront. Thomas Hunter and I have been talking about, I've got a lot of street trees. And Mr. Clausen, maybe you could help me. How did they come about? It was probably 20, 25 years ago?
It was a number of years ago that the federal government had a program to help communities plant more trees. And Congressman Dix helped us with funding.
Okay.
And pretty much paid for all of those trees that we have along our streets on Klein and Sydney.
Klein, Sydney, Kitsap. So Thomas, I've been talking about, now that we have a bucket truck, maybe we want to help with the pruning of some of those trees. Some of them are a little shaggy and getting overgrown. But I think we need to go, have a process where we reach out to the homeowners in front of those houses first, though. So we're working through a process. And I think, I would like to see us add a little bit of money each year into maybe some replacement, some of those, those trees. Because some of them, I think, are beyond pruning, you know, have gotten too big. But so it's one of the things I'm thinking about. We all want to talk about myries and the contractor and the engineer still working some, through some issues related to the compromised wood on the second floor. And I've had, unfortunately, multiple conversations with folks on this here lately. So it's, it's not sitting idle. I wish it wasn't sitting idle, but there's, there's still challenges related to that. There's a wonderful flyer that was in the back of the room, and it was at the dais that our friends at Kitsap Transit created. And it's part of my thoughts on, you know, we're going to be, probably in two weeks, talking about our parking rates. And there's opportunities to park for free out there. And there's space available. And so Transit's going to help me with a letter. And we're going to probably put these with a letter on some windshields, maybe, down in our waterfront parking lot, that we're talking about our parking rates. And we understand the impacts to commuters, but there's, there's alternatives out there. So I thought that was, I'm pretty happy with that. There's plenty of space, I understand, at the First Lutheran Church and the Armory both. And lastly, you know, something that came up at the AWSC conference is that executive sessions are, you know, are something that we can't speak what happens in the back room. And I think Beck was in this session, too. And it's covered under state law, but it's very difficult to enforce. And I understand many cities have gone to a local ordinance that actually, which is much easier to enforce and has potential penalties, you know, and fines. If it's, you know, you're not, if you're not keeping the executive sessions in confidence. So we may have had some problems with that in the past. And when I heard that at the AWSC conference, I thought, you know, that's probably not a bad idea. But it would take you guys taking some action to maybe put that in place. But that's what I have for this evening. And we are on to reports of the department heads. Mr. Dorsey?
Yeah, a couple of quick announcements. So you'll notice that the DeKalb Pier Phase Two work is underway. The barge is in and they're removing piling and floats. So that work will go fairly quickly, barring good soils under the, under the water. That'll, that'll be our challenging part, is making sure that we don't get in any mud. So that's moving quickly. And then also, we're going to be potentially shutting down Bay Street at Arnold here in the very near future. We've got a sinkhole opening up right at the Arnold Creek box culvert. And it looks like the box culvert itself is in okay condition. This is just more of an undermining that's been going on for years outside of the box on either side. And so we'll probably implement the same traffic control plan that we implemented for the seawall here, what, five years ago or so, where local-only traffic at only, run people up only for those people coming into the Tracy Farragut, you know, Stockton area. And then we had local traffic, I think, at Guy Wetzel and Perry coming in. So it should only be a few, three or four days type of a closure, not months like it was before. But just kind of give everybody a heads up that this was unforeseen. And I think we'll be able to fund it out of four different funds because we do have water and sewer, stormdrain and road, all impacted by the, this emergency repair. So. And I'm working on the TIB application for Tremont and fingers crossed on that.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
I do again want to apologize for the, my error on the ordinance that I had the city council pass. I don't want to make light of that, but I do want to say I made my colleagues extremely pleased when I admitted that it was my mistake and they were all off the hook. So for that, I did that. So, thank you.
Mr. Bond?
Yes. Earlier in June, we put the wayfinding signs out to bid and we received our bids on June 29th. And I wasn't sure what process we wanted to use going forward for awarding that, whether we need to take it to one of the committees or whether we want to have a discussion at council with the lack of an August work study meeting. We're, we're very busy at the next week's work study meeting. So we can, I can tell you about that now or we can send it to a committee. I just wanted to find out what your preference was.
I don't know. We've, all the wayfinding signs so far has come through economic development. I'd be happy to put it on that agenda unless council wants to discuss it now.
That is next Monday.
That is next Monday.
Mm-hmm.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, great.
All right.
Okay, we'll bring it to you then.
Chair?
I have nothing this week. Thank you.
Brandy?
Yes, I have a couple of things. So one, I wanted to let the council know that we officially have the public records request portal live and on the city's website. We've had a handful of requests. Didn't want to publicly announce it until we got the system under control, not under control, but we know how to use the system before we encourage the public to put in requests. So we're ready for them now. You'll probably see a press release a little bit later. It's just a way to give the records to the public in an easier way. So that's there. The other thing is, it's summertime now and we do not have a current council slash mayor photo. And I know in the last couple administrations, we've had photo ops. So didn't know if you guys wanted the next couple of meetings, when it's nice, show up about 10, 15 minutes early and do photos. Or we can do it in here right before the meeting, right after the meeting.
Two weeks out?
Your thoughts?
Okay.
Everybody going to be here?
Earlier, before it gets dark?
Doing it outside or inside?
It's not dark now.
We don't know, but we, we're not done yet tonight.
Oops.
We have an executive session.
Early. Okay. So I'll schedule that up in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, maybe 15, 10, 15 minutes early.
Okay.
You show up. And in the past, we've done it out here in front of the sign.
Oh, nice. Okay. So I'll get that scheduled. And then the other thing, I just kind of wanted to, two things. So for the foot ferry, the additional foot ferry that we're, the council has supported with our partners, Port of Bremerton, City of Bremerton, Kitsap County. So we have pushed that out to Facebook. We've put ads in the newspaper. We have purchased two A-Board signs. We did it last season. We did it this session as well, where the Port of Bremerton is in agreeance to put out signs that says, "To Port Orchard" on the Bremerton side of the ferry to encourage riders to come this way. I had staff reach out over to Visit Seattle. And we had created some brochures. It's a Slim Jim-style brochure. We've sent them 100 of those copies over to Visit Seattle. They're going to disperse them at their facility. And Janine will make sure that they are well-stocked for the next couple of weeks. And then, so we're encouraging the ridership to get the, the numbers up. Then the last thing is, I know it's not the city project, it's a Washington State Department of Transportation project. I'm sure you guys have noticed that they've opened a portion, if not all, of State Route 166 eastbound.
Eastbound.
And so we do have it on our front page. So when you go click on the front city's page, you'll click on it and it'll give you the latest and greatest update. We monitor the state's website. So whatever's there, we make sure it's on the city's website with the current maps. So if you guys have any questions, just go to our website and the maps and current information will be there. And the contact for the project manager for the state of Washington. So that's what I have.
Yeah. Eastbound for another six weeks.
Follow-up, too, on tourism. I think it was Bill Thiele that shared with us. He came back from Northern California and in a brochure rack, probably our VCB was, have sent these out, and had a brochure and a map about Port Orchard in Northern California. He pulled out of a brochure rack, brought it back. So
Nice.
I thought that was pretty cool.
Is that the Port Orchard brochure? The Explore Port Orchard brochure?
I think so, yes.
Distributed through, oh, the name's just going to escape me. Yeah. And they, they pay for that.
At least it brought somebody home.
Right.
Anyway.
Brought somebody.
I don't know if it brought a visitor or not. Those, those maps are out there. So we're on to citizen comments, I think.
Can I do a good of the order?
Yes, you may.
I just wanted to thank my fellow councilmembers for indulging me and passing out balloons at the parade. I had a great time and I hope everyone else did, too.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great idea.
I have a quick good of the order as well.
Okay.
So it's been six months since I've been on the council and I just wanted to thank you for helping me along with that. And I really enjoyed my time and experience here and look forward to working with you all more, including the public. I think we've got a good group of people, a good yin and yang with this, with this current set. And I'm very, very pleased.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
For the good of the order. This is something that crossed my mind while I was sitting on Highway 16 today. It stopped traffic about an hour and a half before council meeting. And I had the pleasure of looking at some signs that have been installed recently that give direction to the city center. It is a, so my thanks is to Mr. Bond for bringing that to our attention and giving us the guidance to pass that and have those signs implemented. And they are great. I've passed them many times and this is the first chance I've had to say thank you. They look great. Common sense.
Okay. On to citizen comment. May I wish a comment? Okay.
Couple of things. First of all, it's refreshing to see that we have fiscal responsibility in government. I kind of like that. That is very good. I had a question for Mark. How much is the impact fee, you know, that, that we talked about a long time ago, per door that has been implemented?
Well, it's for an apartment.
Apartment or even a single family?
It's 0.62% of the impact fee, 2,552.
So what is that, like 2,500 or something like that?
No, 2,500 times 0.6. So you're looking at what, 1,800 or something like that?
1,800, okay. I just see the impact of
1,500.
1,500?
1,530.
I see the impact for Port Orchard to adopt something like this to be a real good impact for the coffers for Port Orchard. And, you know, with the amount of people from Seattle coming over here at a pretty high rate, we've done some studies, went down and talked to a lot of businesses down below. And they say sometimes up to half the people are from Seattle coming over. And with the prices of homes and, and everything, I'd rather sit on a 30-minute foot ferry instead of 30 minutes to go just barely out of town. So, but yeah, I hope you take a good look at it. And, but if you have any questions, please give me a call or email me. I'll be happy to talk to you and tell you what we're doing, what we have planned. And they're going to be very nice. So, thank you very much.
Great comments. Yes, Ms. Bremerton?
I just wanted to add to my comments regarding the public hearing, that in, in light of developing raw property, I would not support that. It's not that I, I don't wish them to have the benefit, but I think the intention is to kickstart depressed areas and to revitalize some of these derelict buildings that we have at this present moment. And so I think that you could be entering into a gray zone that would, you know, where do you draw the line? Other people that might want to develop raw property. What I'm also saying here is, oh, I lost my train of mind. Beneficial-wise, what would we be giving up as far as, if we gave this benefit to raw property development, what is the city giving up as far as revenue and things like that? So personally, right now, the way I see it, So, personally, right now, the way I see it, I wouldn't be in favor of it unless I could see more benefit to the people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Others wishing to testify or comment? Yes, ma'am.
Council members, Mr. Mayor, my name is Mary Louise Schmerfeld. Do you need me to spell that, or? I have a question for you, Mr. Mayor, about the city's view-protection overlay district, specifically about the enforcement of the code prohibition for any resident within the district to grow trees or foliage that would unreasonably obstruct a neighbor's view. I'm aware the code states that this is a private nuisance subject to redress through mediation, arbitration, or litigation. My question has to do with the section of the code that follows that section, which states the mayor and/or his designee, his or her designee, is authorized to develop administrative guidelines for the abatement of private view obstruction nuisances and resolution of view and sunlight obstruction disputes. My question is simply whether any such administrative guidelines exist currently, and/or whether, if not, if there's any plan to develop such guidelines.
I'm not aware of any guidelines and how we've, there really isn't any enforcement of that. It is viewed as a civil matter between, you know, two neighbors, is my understanding of, of the view protection overlay ordinance. Is that an accurate statement?
I would have to look into this. This predates my arrival here, and we've never had to use anything like that, but it, it may exist somewhere.
Okay.
So, we can look into it.
So, get your information to the clerk, Mr. Bond. It sounds like he'll research it, but, and we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jerry?
I had a couple of thoughts during the meeting. Lot of things that are put into law by our state legislature don't have a fairness issue. And I think that not just our lobbyists that you have hired to be down there, but you, as members of the council, need to start doing more to go back to them and say, okay, you have this law, and it's to help us get more money, but it's not fair to all of our constituents. And the one that I'm talking about is where everybody's paying $20 or $40 or $60, when there are some people that actually use the roads very, very little, and other people that are on them all day long, morning to night. And a mileage part to this law would be a lot fairer than just saying everybody has to pay $20 or $40 or $100, whatever. But I think it's your responsibility, when these new laws come down, to say, hey, am I representing my, the people that elected me to have, where everybody is actually paying their fair share, and not putting a burden on a lot of people that aren't getting any benefit from this law? Also, some of you ran with the idea that you would get the people involved, and I haven't seen any of that up to this point in time. And I think before things get here, and your minds are so made up, that the people need to be upfront first, and then you bring it, you know, after you have some input, and then hire the people to do the research and that, if you don't trust what's coming to you from the citizens. So that's another thing that I think needs to be done. And I'm kind of worried about advisory votes. I know that some of you want to have them, but I would find it very, very insulting to have an advisory vote, and the citizens of Port Orchard say, no, don't do it, and then you go ahead because you need the money. So I want you to think about that, because I don't think it would do any of you any good to have an advisory vote, and the people vote it down, and then you pass it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Other comments? Got something for us? Guilted you into it.
I was gonna thank you for putting together our small little park down by Lolly Mays. It's really beginning to look nice. We've got the tables, and maybe we'll have some flowers, and we have the fences, but it, it looks real good, and thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you, Bobby. Any other comments? Okay. We are going to, into an executive session pursuant to RCW 40.30, 0.110, 1B relating to real estate. The city council will hold an executive session. We should probably be about, we'll start with 20 minutes. We won't take any action after, after the executive session, but I'll be back out to adjourn the meeting later.